Call the Wilmer City Council Meeting of October 1st, 2007 to order. First item of business tonight, the mayor and Mayor Protem Doug Reese are out of town tonight, so first item of business would be to elect a presiding officer for this meeting.
I would move that Councilmember DeBleek be appointed presiding officer.
Second.
There's a second, more discussion. Not all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion would carry. Roll Paul, Kevin?
Mayor Heike. Councilmember Reese. Christensen.
Present.
Anderson.
Here.
Swenson.
Here.
Gardner.
Here.
Dockin.
Here.
Fagerly.
Here.
DeBleek.
Here.
Seven present, two absent.
Okay, is there Christian present? The Pledge of Allegiance, if you want to raise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
They have one miscellaneous item in the agenda, the very discussion about a liquor license under miscellaneous, and are there any other additions or deletions to the agenda? Not, is there a motion to approve the agenda?
So move.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Would carry. Consent agenda. Motion to approve the consent agenda? Move to approve. There's a second?
Second.
Second. All those in favor say aye. Any items you want to pull?
Yep.
Mr. Dockin, would you like to pull?
Thank you. Mr. Mayor Protem, I want to pull 5B, the Rice Hospital Board Minutes, and 5C, the, or, excuse me, 5D, the Wilmer Senior Citizens Council Minutes.
And I'd like to pull the Rice, the Municipal Utilities Commission Minutes of September Not ready to vote on the other items on the consent agenda? So, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, would carry. Member Dockin?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protem. I did not attend the, as the liaison, the September 12th Rice Hospital Board Minutes, but there are some interesting items, I think, that just need to be talked about. The regional dental clinic, we have a Dr. Ericson in town, he'll be starting his new position as the director of this regional dental clinic. On October 4th, there is a town hall meeting that's been scheduled. Item two, the Alexandria Orthopedic Clinic Associates Clinic currently has orthopedic surgeons working in the community four days a week. They've been scheduling surgical case procedures both at Rice Hospital and the Wilmer Surgery Center. And it's also interesting to note that the hospital passed a Medicare survey. And then finally, I want to talk briefly, Mr. Protem, about item number seven, which is radiological services. It was announced at the August Board Meeting that West Central Radiological Associates, W-C-R-A, and it's interesting to note that they have been in our community now, I'm told, for 46 years. That's a long time, providing up to, at some point, seven radiologists. Anyway, have given their notice of terminating services at Rice Hospital. Discussions have taken place with them regarding Rice' intent to explore options with suburban radiology in an attempt to have a single radiological service in the Wilmer community. W-C-R-A will terminate its services to Rice Hospital effective October 12th. Rice is currently negotiating an agreement with suburban radiology, and staff is currently working on the transition process. As a result of the transition, the hospital may see a reduction in onsite coverage, but improvements will be seen in imaging, images done by teleradiology. Suburban radiology has 33 radiologists on staff that will be interpreting our films. Virtual radiological consultants will be utilized for after hour coverage in addition to coverage from suburban radiology. Suburban radiology onsite coverage will provide two day a week initially, now that's between Rice and ACMC, two days a week. And for 46 years, we had seven radiologists, seven days a week, 24 hours a day. So this is an item that we need to really be mindful of, and so I just wanted to draw that to the council and the public's attention, and I'll move for the adoption of the Rice Minutes.
Second. Motion is second for the adoption of the Rice Hospital Minutes of September 12th. More discussion? Not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Carry. I guess I can take the Municipal Utilities Commission Minutes of September 24th. Just wanted to point out in their minutes, had discussion and passed a resolution to, for a tentative agreement with regard to service territory between Municipal Utilities and the Candy Ojai Cooperative Power. Just want to make you all aware that we'll be discussing that in an upcoming Community Development Meeting on October 4th. So, that item will be coming to the council. So, Jim, I believe you were at that meeting, you know the comments?
Right. I just wanted to make the comment that the rest of the commission was very complimentary of you, Mr. Bonowitz, and Mr. Gash on the great job that you did, and Mr. Gom also, in putting the service territory agreement together, and they were very complimentary of your efforts.
Thank you, and I think we have a very good agreement to bring forth, so. With that, I'll make a motion that we, to approve the Municipal Utilities Minutes of September 24th.
Second.
Any more discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Carry. You had a question about, and you had Wilmer Senior Citizens?
Yeah, thank you. We met on September the 5th, and again, I'm the council representative there, and I just want again to bring to the attention of staff that the person who was a work experience worker, doing maintenance work at the center, has left, and so we need to put some priority on finding someone to fill in there, whether it's 20 hours a week, on a really permanent and a sustainable and accountable basis, because there's a lot of activity that goes on there, and the common areas need to be taken care of on a, on a daily basis out there. Move for the exception of this report.
Second.
For a second? More discussion? Not all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion would carry. We're down to Wilmer City Council, open forum. Kevin, do you have the sheet? Is there anybody that wishes to address the council at this time? Warren, I know this is, you've been here before, but you want to give your name and...
Warren Jorgensen, 1000 Candy Ojai Avenue Southwest, Wilmer, Minnesota. Mayor Protem, council members, thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. I just have a couple of things I want to mention. The only reason I'm here tonight is bec, in my opinion, is a lack of information in the Public Works Minutes reports that you all have, so I want to talk about a couple of things that, that happened there. First off, I did really receive a letter from Bruce Peterson inquiring as to how long we would be on 10th Street with the, with the RV that we're currently living in, and I do appreciate Bruce's letter. It was non-threatening, very supportive, and I've communicated to him, hopefully, that we'll be out of there in a week or so, I'm hoping. The other thing I, that I did want to bring to your attention is that I've had a realtor look at our property, and this person did give me a report on a potential market value of the property before or prior to any flooding issues at our intersection, and then under the current, reoccurring flooding issues down there. It's not a very enjoyable thing to look at, because basically she says that our property is worthless, and I'd be virtually unable to sell the property in its current condition and its current location. I think that's probably, if the rest of the neighborhood did the same thing, they'd probably run into the same thing that we've got. This was not mentioned in those minutes, and I wanted to make sure that you're all aware of it. I don't know what we're going to do, a little difficult to get financing on something to fix up a house that doesn't have any resale value based on the current flooding situation, so. The other thing I would like to ask is, is the 1998 BAR report that indicates it's a draft version, is there a final version of that floating around the system someplace, or is that never made it past draft stages, or? I was just kind of curious.
I guess to answer that, I refer to Mr. Schmidt. I'm not sure if we have a final report on that.
I think what you have is what we got from BAR.
So we never, we don't have a final, nothing?
Of that document, no, it's been updated a number of times over the years.
What, what happens with draft reports? Are they, does the city act on them, or are they just merely for information, or, I guess I'm kind of curious is, what that really means when it's a draft report? Is there? Answer that by chance?
Well, in that context, I'd have to go back and run my idea of what happened without going back and checking the minutes of meetings back in the late 90s.
Okay. I'm just kind of curious, so.
Okay, we'd have to go back and review the minutes from those meetings to see what actually was done, if it was accepted or just referred to a committee.
Okay.
At that time.
Great, thank you.
Warren, that information on the realtor, is that available for?
Yeah, I can, the staff, if they would like to look at it. Yep, I can make, I'll make copies of it for each one of you.
And I guess if, that's up to them, if they would want a copy, they should.
Okay.
Contact you then, yeah.
I'll get copies for you.
Okay. Thanks, Warren. Anyone else would like to address the council?
Thank you, council members. My name is Laura Becker. I live at 1010 Candy Ojai Avenue Southwest. First of all, I want to make known, this is not my comfort zone up here. I am here to ask the same questions I asked you, those of you that were at the Public Works Meeting. Why we, as residents of 10th and Candy Ojai, are still talking about the same water issues nine years after I just found out your rough draft report from BAR Engineering? At that time, you contracted BAR Engineering to complete a comprehensive storm water management plan. The fee that I have been advised that you paid for that report was $58,800. It did encompass more than just the downtown Wilmer area. The city, per this report, became aware of flooding problems in the downtown area in 1997. The report states that the population of Wilmer would be increasing, and the city is expected to be expand beyond its current limits in the near future. The city knew in 1998 that there were already flooding problems and downstream drainage issues. I still ask you why, nine years later, there have been no changes at the intersection of 10th and Candy Ojai? Two years ago, we, as neighbors, came before this council. Two years ago, we asked you to fix a problem. Again, you went back to BAR. In your latest version of the BAR report, which was completed in August of 2006, it does go on to state that BAR was given a very limited scope on what they were supposed to do to fix the problem at 10th and Candy Ojai. They were only given, per their report, it was to include modeling three different downstream ponding scenarios involving the open area just west of Kennedy Elementary Track. One scenario essentially involved placing the largest pond possible in that open area without impacting the adjacent property and track. Two other smaller pond scenarios were analyzed to identify inclement flood reduction that could be achieved by the smaller ponds for the 100-year event. I question staff and council why you paid $30,000 for this report when you did not have any permission anywhere to put a pond at Kennedy. I would not pay a penny to anyone to do something that I did not know was obtainable. Those are my tax dollars that you spent. As I read through this report, which I am hoping now you all have a copy of this BAR report, they cannot come up with anything to correct the situation at 10th and Candy Ojai by any measurable amount with the parameters that you gave them. And by you, I also mean your staff. I am very frustrated as a homeowner and a taxpayer. My neighbors have lost their home. They are living on a trailer in the street. I thank you for your time, and again, I am still waiting for a response. Councilmember DeBleek, at the Public Works Meeting, you did state that we would have an answer in two weeks. My calendar says that's next Tuesday. I will be there at 4:45, waiting for some kind of response. Thank you.
David Becker, I live at 1010 Candy Ojai Avenue Southwest. I would, councilmen, I, councilmen, excuse me, and women, I'm sorry. I'd like to address a couple of issues that were brought up at the last council meeting by Mayor Heike, and I'm sorry, he's not here today to hear my response to it. In, in that meeting, he gave concern with the fact that this is an entire city issue, and in fact, it is, an entire city issue. Too often, I think everybody, we all think, oh, it's just, you know, the folks at 10th and Candy Ojai. Well, no, it's not. Almost anybody that you talk to, if you took the time to speak with the people of this city, would tell you stories of wet basements and water in the basements, and, so it is. It's a citywide issue. Also, it includes our downtown businesses and people in that area. One thing that you have to, that you have to understand, of course, is if, if you look at all this, it all drains through the same pipes, and when those pipes back up, a lot of us in this area have issues. We're not here stating that our issue is the worst, although I think some people would say it probably is. However, for this all-American city to stand over the last 30 or 40 years and do nothing is totally unacceptable. And for, and I'm sorry he's not here, for me to look him in the eye, but I'll look you in the eye instead, for Mr. Heike to say, well, gee, it might cost a dollar or two in taxes to fix this whole problem. Well, I'm sorry. I'm sure, though, if we went back over the last 30 and 40 years and looked at money that we've maybe wasted or haven't managed properly, that maybe it wouldn't be all that big a deal. Thanks very much.
Thank you. Anyone else who would like to address the council? Come on up and give your name and address and...
Lauren Schultz, 901 Irene Avenue. How are we going to fix the problem? I'd like a little cooperation. I brought forth a proposal this spring, talked to the city engineer, Ron Christensen, the mayor, I don't know if you guys discussed it or not, brought all the literature with, purchase price, resale value. Has that been discussed amongst you?
Not in a committee.
I think that was, was that discussed in committee?
I don't recall that that particular item was, I know that I discussed it with the mayor, and I brought it up to Mick.
Individually, and need to fix the problem. That's why I brought it to you last spring, and didn't get any reception from it. So that, well, we'll just let go. But now you made your, set your agenda for next year. It isn't on there. Should be on there. Do you know what my proposal was?
Apparently, I, I myself am not familiar with it.
Okay.
But I don't want to get into that kind of a debate, right?
You've got a $75 million project, an $85 million project, whatever it is, it is, that you're going to be doing in the next few years. Wanted you to do a joint venture with the county, 50/50. It's their ditch in your water. The ditch is 100 years old. Sediment, I don't know how, how much is collected in there, but on the south side of Eagle Lake, when I dug that water settling pond by the public access, there was a pipe laid on the south side of the road, a 24-inch diameter, and it averaged one inch a year for 24 years it was there, and it was full. Dug the pond, removed the material put up by the road, put it on the lot, and dug out four feet, two feet below the level of the pipe, and now our water samples come in and clean at the lake. Built a dam on the east side of Eagle Lake, 9,000 acres of watershed runs over that dam. Built two dams on the west side of Hillcrest Cafe in the Norway Lake chain, Shakopee Creek, about 40,000 acres run over those two dams, and we only got 110, 120 acres holding capacity on those two farms, Burt McBroom and Duane Combs. With all that water, it even comes from Swift County in here, over to the northwest. Big Norway, Little Norway, and so on. With all that watershed, I have very little capacity for all that watershed. And we only got so much, we're limited for land that we put this on. It's either farmed in a program, or it's something, it's trees or hills or whatever it is. We only got so much land to use. The DNR recognizes that they can't have everything. I asked them for the soil samples of the Lake Wagona, they don't have any. And if that sediment was coming in for the last 100 years, at the average rate of an inch a year, we'd have 100 inches. Lake Wagona jumps up four feet in 24 hours when it rains in Wilmer. If that's so, if we got 100 inches of sediment, there's where we're missing the boat. We need that. We need it back. There hasn't been a sediment block or anything on that ditch for 100 years. At Eagle Lake there, the cattails grow back, got the sediment block, the cattails is our best filter, we don't have to plant them every year. It does its job. So, all these things enter in. The other big thing is, in my lifetime being here, I've been here since 1956. The gravel pits at Eagle Lake were at a small gravel pit on the north side of the road, you can tell where it was by the size of the big trees. The rest is since then. My dad used to farm the land. Now, take all the gravel pits in the whole Candy Ojai County, all of them, look at the volume. Not that they will hold anything, they won't. Look at the size and the depth, acreage. This is the biggest problem, what I see. Hutchison has gravel pit in the water along the river, that's where your gravel deposits are. Granite Falls.
Lauren, you're going to have to wrap up your comments here in another minute or so, so we can move on with our meeting.
For every cubic yard of material we take out of there, or that everybody takes out of there and uses on upland, they hold a cubic yard of water. We're doing just the opposite. Can't do it anymore. No place to put it. That's it.
Mr. Mayor Protem, I think it'd be best if Lauren would come to a Public Works Committee meeting, and then maybe prior to that, discuss it with Mel, the engineer. He's, he's pretty knowledgeable on what's going on on Lake Wagona, and how to solve, or help solve some of this problem.
I've already discussed it with Mel.
I know.
Okay, but I think we should, we should discuss that and have the Public Works Chairman place that item on the, on the agenda for one of the upcoming meetings, and then bring it to the meeting, if that would be okay, and so we can get more information and better information on that.
All right.
Okay. Anyone else who would like to address the council tonight? If not, we'll move on to item number eight, Finance Committee Report. Councilmember Anderson?
Thank you, Mr. Presiding Officer. First item on our agenda was the funding, FPA funding for the waste treatment plant. Finance Director Okens informed us that the city of Wilmer must submit an application to the Minnesota Public Facilities Authority to initially qualify for funding for the new waste treatment plant. If Wilmer's application is approved, the FPA will include the funding amount on their list of qualified applicants. The city will be, will be requesting to receive half the funding in 2008, with the remainder in 2009. Following some discussion, there was a motion made second and passed, and I will make a motion to authorize the mayor and city administrator to execute and submit the new waste treatment plant funding application to the Minnesota Public Facilities Authority.
Second. Okay. We have a motion, and there is a second to authorize mayor and city administrator to execute the new waste treatment plant funding application? Any more discussion or comments? Remember Dockin?
Thank you, Mr. Protem. Mick, I listened to your, your comment this morning on open mic, and I have a couple of questions. You indicated that at the outset of this, for the financing, we were going to attempt to, from the state and federal, get $20 million, and you indicated that we have a good... And you indicated that we have a good chance to get fifteen from the federal government, is that correct?
That's what I said.
And that we have just about also accumulated another five million through the state? Give us that breakout?
Not off the top of my head. We haven't received an additional five, but probably closer to two. So we're probably, with the commitments that we've had up to this point and the funding through the federal government, we're, we're in that seventeen to eighteen million dollar range.
And the more that we...
But I want to qualify that. The, the federal funding commitment is, is just that at this point, there have been no dollars appropriated for the project. But it is in the final bill that went to the president.
But these grants, these dollars that we would get from the state and federal funding will be very helpful with respect to the rates that the citizens end up paying eventually.
Significantly so.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any other items or discussion on that item? Not yet ready to vote? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion to carry. Anderson?
The second item had to do with some delinquent sales tax from the library, sales tax reserve or tax. We were informed that the state of Minnesota Department of Revenue has sent the city twenty-seven thousand ninety-eight dollars and seventy-nine cents for the library's local option sales tax program. That was the program that phased out four or five years ago. This payment is a result of delinquent filed returns and sales tax audits that were processed over the years since the closeout of the program. It was recommended that these funds be put in the Library Improvement Reserve Fund, which was established at the end of that project to be utilized for the library for capital outlays. Following some discussion, there was a motion made seconded and passed, and I would introduce a resolution to allocate the twenty-seven thousand ninety-eight dollars and seventy-nine cents received from the state of Minnesota to the, to go to the Library Improvement Reserve Fund.
Second.
There is, that is a resolution. Any, any more discussion? Remember Dawkin?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protem. Mick, again, you talked about this coming from tax delinquencies. What were those tax delinquencies?
These are sales tax revenues that were collected following the closeout of that local option sales tax that was in place specifically for the library project. So revenues that came in beyond that cutoff date.
Okay. Thank you.
More discussion? Not yet ready to vote? Kevin?
Councilmember Christensen.
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Swenson?
Aye.
Gardner?
Aye.
Dawkin?
Aye.
Fagerly?
Aye.
DeBlick?
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays.
Number three.
The next item was the, having to do with the library and their budget. John Houlihan of the Pioneer Library System and Lori Ortega from the Wilmer Library discussed budget concerns with us. Under the mayor's proposed two thousand and eight budget, the library will be receiving three hundred and fifty-two thousand seven hundred and seventy-three dollars from the city. That's an increase of ten thousand two hundred and seventy-five dollars or three percent over the city's two thousand and seven contribution. Mr. Houlihan expressed his concern that the library's request that submitted to the city for two thousand and eight was reduced by seven thousand six hundred and sixty-nine dollars. He stated that the amount the library is to receive from the state of Minnesota has been reduced by approximately four thousand dollars as well. Mr. Houlihan asked the committee to reconsider the city's contribution and fully fund their request for two thousand and eight. We had some discussion on the matter and we took that for information only. The next item was the Rice Memorial Hospital and their intent to reimburse themselves. The committee was informed that Rice Memorial Hospital is considering the issuance of bonds to construct a new facility to replace Rice Care Center. The hospital is a component unit of the city of, of the city, which pursuant to IRS regulations is required to declare its intention to be reimbursed for bond issue costs incurred before the bond amount determination is complete. Some examples of the costs that might be included are advertising, printing, staff time, so on and so forth. Following discussion, there was a motion made seconded and passed, and I would introduce a resolution declaring the city, on behalf of Rice Hospital, does intend to reimburse itself for the preliminary bond issue costs incurred prior to the bond amount determination.
Second.
That is a resolution and has been seconded. Any more discussion on that? Not Kevin, roll call?
Councilmember Anderson.
Aye.
Swenson?
Aye.
Gardner?
Aye.
Dawkin?
Aye.
Fagerly?
Aye.
DeBlick?
Aye.
Christensen?
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays.
The next item was two thousand and seven street improvement budget. We were informed that a revision needs to be made to the two thousand improvement budget to remove three hundred thousand dollars for the cost estimate for the batuminous overlay of the realigned Wilmer Avenue project. This three hundred thousand will be reapportioned in two thousand and eight improvement project. It's just moving from two thousand and seven to two thousand and eight. Following discussion, there was a motion made seconded and passed, and I would introduce a resolution to approve the revised two thousand and seven street improvement budget as stated.
Second.
The resolution has been seconded. Any more discussion? Hearing none, roll call, Kevin?
Councilmember Swenson?
Aye.
Gardner?
Aye.
Dawkin?
Aye.
Fagerly?
Aye.
DeBlick?
Aye.
Christensen?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays.
The next item was having to do with an auditor. We were presented a proposal from Westburg Eichens to conduct the two thousand and seven audit at a cost of sixteen thousand eight hundred and sixty dollars with an additional charge of fifteen hundred dollars for financial statement preparation. We had some discussion on this matter and after the discussion, there was a motion made seconded and passed, that I would introduce a resolution to authorize Westburg, Westburg Eichens to conduct the two thousand and seven audit financial statement preparation in the amount of eighteen thousand three hundred and sixty dollars.
Second.
The resolution's been seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call, Kevin?
Councilmember Gardner?
Aye.
Dawkin?
Aye.
Fagerly?
Aye.
DeBlick?
Aye.
Christensen?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Swenson?
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays.
The seventh item on our agenda was the beginnings of our two thousand and eight budget discussion. We begin our review of the mayor's two thousand and eight budget by considering projected revenues. Finance Director Okens provided basic information about the various fund revenues and distributed copies of the two thousand and eight revenue budget worksheet, which reflects all proposed revenues. Consideration will be given for potentially utilizing new funding sources anticipated during, during the next few years, including the Economic Development Revolving Loan Fund, which is projected to have a fund balance of twenty-five thousand dollars by the end of two thousand and seven and thirty-seven thousand dollars by the end of two thousand and eight. In two thousand and six, the city received a grant in the amount of four hundred thousand dollars from the Department of Employment and Economic Development, which was loaned in turn to Wilmer Fabrication. This loan is gradually being repaid to the city and which could possibly provide funding to attract new business and industry to the industrial park. Funds may also be generated from selling property and other proceeds in the industrial park, old airport area. These funds would also need to be considered for specific uses only. The next item was the Convention and Visitors Bureau has restrictions on the lodging taxes collected, of which ninety-five percent are to be used for the CVB expenditures and five percent for the city's administrative costs. RAC eight is primarily funded by cable franchise dollars, which are not restricted. Historically, the council has designated these funds for RAC eight purposes only. At the end of two thousand and seven, the projected fund balance for two, for RAC eight is two hundred and ninety-eight thousand dollars. The local option sales tax fund is projected to receive one point six million dollars for two thousand and eight, which is designated for the building connection between the Civic Center and Blue Line Center, expansion of the hiking and biking trails, purchase of the Wilmer Regional Treatment Center land and industrial park expansion. The Community Investment Fund was established in nineteen ninety by the council with specific guidelines on how to access these funds. To date, the interest earnings on these funds have been used for the city's share of street improvement costs. As of December thirty-first, two thousand and seven, the projected fund balance is eight point six million dollars. Caution must be used if, if and when considering the use of the principal balance. A substantial share of these funds is obligated to be used for annual payments for the previous year's improvement project bonds. Internal service funds include Office Services Fund, from which all city departments purchase office supplies. The Public Improvement Revolving Fund maintains a balance of one million dollars, which is established by the council for use as a temporary funding source to cover costs incurred until permanent funding is obtained. The Public Improvement Revolving, Revolving Loan Fund is to be reimbursed within five years for funding temporary costs. Waste treatment plant revenues are for operational costs. The debt service funds include Rice Hospital, tax increment financing and the ten-year street improvement bonds. All revenues in these funds are restricted for servicing debt. The general fund operating budget is the largest and most inclusive part of the entire city budget and is comprised mainly of the local government aid from the state of Minnesota and the property tax levy from Candy High County. We'll continue to review the revenues and look for possible funding sources for some of the items that the mayor wasn't able to fund in two thousand and eight, those things such as entrances to the downtown through the east and west side quiet zones and flood control needs in various parts of the city. All of that was for information only. The final item were some reports. We looked at the July Rice Memorial Hospital, the August Rice Trust and the August EDC, and that was for information only. Unless there's questions, I'd move to file these minutes.
Second.
Are there any questions on the minutes? If not, all those in favor of filing a minute, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion to carry. Item number nine, Public Works, Public Safety. I believe Councilman Christensen, vice chair, going to give that report?
Yes, thank you. First item on our agenda had to do with the Candy High County Trails website. Connie Philly from the Candy High County Tourism Committee was at the meeting to demonstrate their new website, which was created for the county trail system. The committee is marketing the entire trail system to include snowmobiles, ATVs, hiking and biking and horseback riding, and that was for information only, as was our second item, which was the Airport Remote Communications Outlet. Our airport manager was in attendance and she presented the information relating to the city's lease with the FAA for the remote communications outlet known as RCO. It's located in the city terminal building at the former airport. This lease that we have, them expires on September thirtieth, expired yesterday. And the FAA would like an extension for at least eighteen months until the equipment can be relocated if we so desire. The city is hesitant to renew for this length of time as there's been interest expressed in the building site as part of the development of the former airport. Our staff is currently researching several options for relocating this RCO as the FAA requires an engineering study prior to relocation and that we, the city, would finance the cost of the engineering study. The estimated cost for the study and relocation is in the neighborhood of one hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars if the FAA performs all the work. Some options include installing alternate equipment or contacting other agencies to assist in relocating the present equipment. This item has also been discussed at the Airport Commission and will be brought back to our committee for recommendation at a future meeting. Excuse me. Item number three, stormwater discussion, flooding. This was for information also, information only. Mr. Jorgensen and several other guests were at our meeting. They requested to meet with the committee to review any progress that has been made on the city's stormwater improvement program. Staff indicated that it would be at least two more weeks before any draft plans or recommendations would be made and submitted for council consideration. I suspect that two weeks is this coming Tuesday then, Mick? Is that correct?
That's our target date, yes.
Okay. Thank you. That was for information only. Item number four was to accept project oh five oh one and authorize final payment. Staff again presented a request for final payment and acceptance of project oh five oh one. The work was performed by Dunick Brothers, starting in two thousand and five and was completed in the summer of two thousand and six. Some negotiations with the contract relating to claims for gas utilities, water main removal, liquidated damages and fiber optics was settled in early September of two thousand and seven. That would be the last month. The final payment of one hundred fifty thousand five hundred thirteen dollars and ninety-eight cents is recommended by staff. The total project costs are below the contract by approximately fifty-four thousand dollars. Again, a motion was made, seconded and passed for the following, and I will introduce this motion to accept the project oh five oh one and authorize final payment to Dunick Brothers in the amount of one hundred fifty thousand five hundred thirteen dollars and ninety-eight cents.
Second.
Okay. It is a resolution and has been seconded. Any more discussion on that? That'd be a resolution to authorize final payment, final payment for project oh five oh one. Ready to vote? Roll call, Kevin?
Councilmember Dawkin?
Aye.
Fagerly?
Aye.
DeBlick?
Aye.
Christensen?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Swenson?
Aye.
Gardner?
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays.
Item number five, again was another project, accepting the final project for oh six oh one. We were presented a request for final payment and acceptance of project number oh six oh one. The contract was with Munson Excavating of Wilmer for the reconfection of various streets done in two thousand and six. All of the work is complete and the project came in under budget by sixty-one thousand six hundred and ten dollars. Once again, a motion was made, seconded and passed for the following, and I will introduce the resolution to accept project number oh six oh one and authorize final payment in the amount of forty-eight thousand seven hundred and ten dollars and ten cents.
Second.
This is a resolution and has been seconded, authorize final payment for project number oh six oh one. Any more discussion? Not ready to vote? Kevin, roll call?
Councilmember Fagerly?
Aye.
DeBlick?
Aye.
Christensen?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Swenson?
Aye.
Gardner?
Aye.
Dawkin?
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays.
Item number six had to do with the county mutual aid agreement. Our fire chief, Mr. Kelvin, reviewed a mutual aid agreement which authorizes equipment, personnel and other resources to be made available to political subdivisions within our county. Both requests for assistance and the response to the request would be made by authorized officials only. Each party shall be responsible for any damages to loss of its own equipment and for any injuries of its own personnel. The city's participation in the agreement is required under the new NIMS standard, N-I-M-S. Once again, a motion was made, seconded and passed for the following, and I will introduce this recommendation, that we approve the city's participation in the mutual aid agreement and authorize the city to, city administrator to sign on behalf of the city.
Second.
Second. And been seconded. That is a resolution to approve the mutual aid agreement. Any more discussion? Not be ready to vote? Kevin, roll call?
Councilmember DeBlick?
Aye.
Christensen?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Swenson?
Aye.
Gardner?
Aye.
Dawkin?
Aye.
Fagerly?
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays.
On that same item, we were given information via email from FEMA regarding the city's application for radio grant funding. It appears that our initial request was reduced from one million dollars to about nine hundred eighty-eight thousand dollars. Following some discussion, it was agreed staff would indicate its willingness to accept the reduced amount and return to committee following formal grant approval. Committee members congratulated staff for its success in securing these preliminary grant awards. Item number seven had to do with the Civic Center, Blue Line Center connection. Change order number four. Change order number four was in the amount of two million, excuse me, two thousand one hundred and eleven dollars to Chester Contracting for work at the Civic Center. The change was requested by Civic Center's... The change was requested by Civic Center staff and includes removal of a center support post in room one twenty-one and installation of several supports and a cross beam to allow better use of the area. Funding for the change order would come from the contingency fund of the budget, so the budget would not need to be changed. Motion was made, seconded and passed for the following, and I will introduce the resolution. There's two of them here. One is to approve the work in change order number four, and I will introduce that resolution.
Second. Okay, resolution been seconded to approve change order number four. Any questions? Not ready to vote? It'll be a roll call. Kevin?
Councilmember Christensen?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Swenson?
Aye.
Gardner?
Aye.
Dawkins?
Aye.
Fagerly?
Aye.
DeBlick?
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays.
The second resolution has to do with revising the budget, and I will introduce that resolution to revise the budget accordingly, reflecting the two thousand one hundred and eleven dollar change.
Second. A resolution to revise the budget. Is there any more discussion? If not, Kevin, be a roll call.
Councilmember Anderson?
Aye.
Swenson?
Aye.
Gardner?
Aye.
Dawkins?
Aye.
Fagerly?
Aye.
DeBlick?
Aye.
Christensen?
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays.
The eighth item on our agenda had to do with the wastewater treatment plant relocation, monthly report for August from Donahue, and this is for information only. Mr. Holmes of Donahue and Associates summarized the activities related to the WRP wastewater treatment plant relocation for the month of August. The design team has achieved the seventy-five percent complete milestone, has planned and prepared an updated construction cost estimate. A three-day workshop was held with city staff in mid-September to review the seventy-five percent complete document. Field work on private lands, including wetland delineation, appraisal, inspections, and survey was done under the Candy High County Court Order. Appraisals are being prepared for easements needed for conveyance facilities. Several meetings were conducted with property owners along the principal conveyance route, and construction activities are underway for the existing wastewater treatment plant interim modifications with completion planned for this month, October. Item number nine was accepting video camera, a grant for some video cameras, police department. The Wilmer Police Department was notified that they were selected by the Minnesota Department of Public Safety to receive a squad car camera award. Wilmer was awarded fifteen thousand dollars in two thousand and seven with no local match required to fund the four cameras. Staff requested permission to accept the grant money, and a motion was made, seconded and passed for the following, and I will introduce the resolution to accept the grant from the Minnesota Department of Public Safety to fund three squad car cameras and authorize the city administrator to sign on behalf of the city.
Second. That's a resolution, been seconded, that we accept grant money from Minnesota Department of Public Safety for squad car cameras. Any questions or discussion? If you're ready to vote, be a roll call. Kevin?
Councilmember Swenson?
Aye.
Gardner?
Aye.
Dawkins?
Aye.
Fagerly?
Aye.
DeBlick?
Aye.
Christensen?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays.
Item number ten, SEH Traffic Assistance Services Agreement. Staff reviewed correspondence received from Short Elliott Hendrickson Incorporated to in a response to request for general assistance to the city with the traffic signals and traffic systems in general. The proposal includes SEH being on call for operational issues and potential maintenance. Some site visits are estimated to cost one thousand to fifteen hundred dollars and include mileage to and from city of Wilmer. Miscellaneous traffic needs will be performed at a cost of no more than one hundred fifty dollars an hour. A detailed analysis of each hour billed will be provided to the city, along with any reimbursable expenses. The anticipated cost for a period of two months is six thousand dollars with termination of the agreement by either party upon seven days' written notice. Funding would be from the engineering budget under professional services. After some discussion of the agreement, motion was made, seconded and passed for the following, and I will introduce the resolution to accept the proposal as presented and authorize our city administrator to sign on behalf of the city.
Second. Okay, that is a resolution that has been seconded, that we accept the proposal and authorize city administrator to sign. Any questions or discussion on that? Or none? Be a roll call. Kevin?
Councilmember Gardner?
Aye.
Dawkins?
Aye.
Fagerly?
Aye.
DeBlick?
Aye.
Christensen?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Swenson?
Aye.
Gardner?
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays.
If there are no other questions about the minutes, I would move to file the minutes after one question by myself. Kevin, is there a minimum as far as accepting grants? Do we have to formally accept them, no matter what the amount, one thousand, five thousand, fifteen thousand? Is there like a five thousand cap or something?
One thousand, I think. One thousand, we believe it's a thousand.
It is.
I'm in a thousand, we don't have to bring it before the council.
Seems like we're constantly accepting these things, and maybe we should raise that cap. Is there a motion to file the minutes?
Second. Can we have a motion to file the Public Works, Public Safety Committee report? It's been seconded. Councilmember Dawkins, you have a question?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protem. I want to go back to number eight, only to say that in today's West Central Tribune, David Little, our reporter here tonight, has written two excellent articles in today's paper, City Reviews Plans for the New Wastewater Treatment Plant, and also Landowners See How Pipeline Corridor Affects Them. I read them both today, and they are just excellent work, David. Thank you for doing that.
Thank you. There are no further questions on the report? If you're ready to vote, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion to carry. We have item number ten, consideration request for reapportionment of ag deferred assessments. Does Bruce will be taking that?
Councilmember DeBlick, members of the council. The city received an application from Gesh Properties requesting that assessments against their property that would lie on the west side of Lakeland Drive, north of Wilmer Avenue, be reapportioned to reflect the sale of the property to Candy High County for the construction of the sixteen-bed mental health facility. The resolution that you are requested to adopt specifies that the Gesh properties would retain assessments in approximately the amount of twenty thousand, one hundred and thirty dollars, and the sixteen-bed hospital property would receive assessments in the amount of twenty-two hundred and thirty dollars. It's a recommendation of staff that the council adopt the resolution reapportioning the special assessments as requested.
Move to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion or questions on the reapportionment? If not, that's a roll call vote. Kevin, ready?
Councilmember Dawkins?
Aye.
Fagerly?
Aye.
DeBlick?
Aye.
Christensen?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Swenson?
Aye.
Gardner?
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays.
Okay, item number eleven on our agenda is presentation. Hay Dobbs Space Needs Study Analysis. Mick, you're taking that?
Mr. DeBlick and council members, if you look at the front cover of your council packet, and you'll see it on every council packet that you get, we talk about our value statements, and we talk about our mission statement, and our goals and objectives that the council sets from time to time when it has its strategic planning sessions. One of our goals this year was to do a space needs analysis, and with that direction, we solicited proposals and selected the firm of Hay Dobbs to take a look at some of the facilities that we are and should be concerned about as we plan for the future growth of the community. Specifically, we asked Hay Dobbs to look at the city office building, the council chambers here in the municipal utilities building, the fire department, and a related substation issue, the public works and maintenance garage, and the senior community center. We obviously considered other city-owned buildings, but at the time thought that they were adequately covered under current or upcoming programs or projects. I would like to introduce Mr. Tom Dobbs with the firm of Hay Dobbs, who has been working very closely with the city on this project, and I provided copies of his report to you along with your packets or over the weekend, and if you brought them along, you can follow. We're going to kind of walk our way through this and talk about the different aspects of the project. So, Tom, welcome to Wilmer.
Thank you.
You're actually kind of a native of the area, aren't you?
Yes, yes, new one at Spicer graduate, so.
Great, welcome, Tom.
Woo-hoo! I think we're going to project over here. I'm not sure if we have to, oh, you got that all set. So, what we're looking at here is just the cover of the document. We'll move through about the hard copy and the PDF file here. What I want to do is just go through the process we went through, the facilities we looked at, those that we didn't, the methodology that we used, some of the findings, and where we're at with the overall study. So, the study itself, let me give you a little bit of background in terms of the actual effort itself and what was involved. It is a municipal space needs analysis, and what it does not include is any facility condition assessment or building condition assessment. So, we're not looking at necessarily the physical condition of the buildings with respect to their predicted life, roof replacement, accessibility issues, compliance with respect to Americans with Disabilities Act, or life cycle costs, the operating efficiencies, things like that. What we're looking at is really a pure snapshot of where you're at with respect to growth within your municipality, what you have in terms of municipal facilities to service that need, where we project you to be going forward, and then the viability of the facilities to support that municipal service going forward. So, with that, I'm just going to move through the document here. Does everyone have a hard copy with them?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so I'm going to reference the hard copy as well, it gets a little bit easier to see. Let me just start with the overall summary here. Let me just fit this. So, section one point two for reference, and I'll just cover the high points here. As Mr. Schmidt pointed out, the study itself looks at the city office building, the council chambers which run right now, the fire department, and ambulance by association, and I'll get to that in a moment specifically, public works and maintenance, and the senior community center. In looking at that, what we did is we went through and looked at data collection with respect to the overall physical conditions that are there, so a square foot documentation of what you have in terms of current square footage, current uses, current occupancy. We interviewed a number of staff persons with respect to operations and administration, talked to different workers, et cetera, talked about what the current working situations are, what they identified as key needs, and started to document those pieces, collected overall square footage of the facilities, started to look at any prior studies that were done, looking at how the spaces were used, et cetera. What we're looking at in terms of a planning horizon is the year about twenty twenty-five. So, if we roll the clock forward approximately twenty years, give or take a little bit, that's the planning horizon that we're looking at in terms of long-term growth. If we turn to page eight or one point three, the issues and considerations are basically increasing and changing population needs. The current city office building that was converted in nineteen fifties that has its current inefficiencies, both with space and energy, basically that you have staff or more staff needs, and that you're trying to basically develop overall efficient operations, that there's a disconnect of departments in various spaces with respect to the space themselves, particularly at the city hall because of some of the inherent inefficiencies moving into a pre-existing facility. Looking at the council chambers and what the impact is with respect to this space being disconnected from the actual city hall, what technology needs are doing with respect to how you actually function, how you work efficiently, how you address the public, service the public with respect to building permits, staff people coming to and from facilities, people coming to various service windows or lack thereof, looking at emergency management systems and overall municipal operations. And again, in terms of looking at that, we're not looking, I want to be clear that we're not looking at some of the critical deficiencies with respect to Americans with Disabilities Act or Minnesota State Building Code inefficiencies, most of which you're grandfathered in with respect to the Minnesota State Building Code, but the Americans with Disability Act, you're not, and so you are exposed with respect to that, with respect to certain deficiencies. So, when we turn to page ten, which is section two point one, again, I'm going to move through this fairly rapidly. Please stop me if you want me to give you a little more background on that. But what we're looking at again are the spaces we talked about in about an eighteen-year, twenty-year planning horizon. The study itself was to collect data, to analyze that data, and then to come up with some various projections. If you turn to page eleven, which is the next page, what we looked at is the changing demographics of the region. So, here we're looking at where you're moving with respect to municipality and where the county as a whole is moving with respect to regional growth. We're getting these numbers from the state of Minnesota, from Candy High County, we're meshing some of those. A lot of that comes from the state demographer's office. Basically, your projections are to grow modestly through the year twenty twenty-five, and I think that comes as no surprise with respect to the size that you are and where you're moving with respect to total population. We're seeing you moving to approximately twenty thousand five hundred by the year twenty twenty-five, or a twelve percent increase. This, by a lot of standards, is quite modest. Comparatively, though, this is good with respect to economic growth, respect to vitality of the community, with respect to a lot of the other communities we're seeing in outlying areas of the state. And then what we did, we take select pieces, and so with respect to, and I'll get to this specifically in a moment, but we start to do some benchmarking, and I'll get to the specifics of what that means in a moment, but we're looking at some cities with respect to comparable sizes to the city of Wilmer in terms of your projected growth window. So, those are taken both in outstate Minnesota and in what I'll call ex-urban communities around the Twin Cities, specifically Owatonna, Ramsey, Prior Lake, Northfield, and Albert Lee. And if you look to the two thousand and six population, you'll see populations ranging there from about seventeen thousand to twenty-three thousand, give or take. Wilmer at about eighteen seven, projected to be about twenty thousand five hundred in the year twenty twenty-five. On page twelve, essentially have a summary of the spaces, and I won't go through these line by line, but as we've stated, we're looking at governance, city governance, which is administration, council operations, et cetera, as well as public space, community rooms, city government offices, senior center, et cetera, public works, emergency services, and senior services. On page two point, or section two point five, page thirteen, we start to note geographically where the facilities are within the city. I don't need to restate this, I'm sure you're all very familiar with this. It is interesting, though, that you still have a large concentration of offices and functions that are downtown, and you see the large push to the northeast where the county has done some development up by the former state hospital and the Civic Center. Then we do a brief overview of the actual facilities themselves. So, page fourteen, section two point five, we give a brief overview of the municipal buildings that are looked at. These talk about the date of construction, if there's been any subsequent renovation or remodeling, what the uses are in general, and then a brief narrative that describes what's happening within those facilities. So, for that, we go through the city hall, or city offices, rather, the fire station, public works maintenance facility, senior center, and lastly, the ambulance facility. The reason the ambulance facility is included in this, recognizing that it is part of Rice Hospital, is that it plays a key role in public safety, so as that relates to needs or potential needs going forward for the fire department or some sort of shared use there, we think it's important to note there that those functions are being serviced by the hospital. And if I can direct you to page sixteen, page, or section two point six. What we've done is basically developed a matrix for staffing needs over the course of that planning horizon. So, today, year twenty-ten, twenty-fifteen, twenty-twenty, and twenty-twenty-five, these are largely derived from interviews with key staff people and city administrator with respect to police, fire, those spaces that we've talked about. What this does is starts to project out based on current population, current levels of service, staffing to support those service staffing to support that population. We looked at growth over the course of time. Again, you'll see a very modest level of growth here over the course of time from 28 to 33 in those key areas that are defined herein. It's probably less important as to when those come online. That's really an operational discussion for you and your staff with respect to whether it happens in 2010 or 2015, but the key piece is really the end there that we're projecting to in 2025. So, you're seeing, again, that increase from 28 to 33. One thing that should be noted here, and it was discussed a bit during the process, is the potential shift from a volunteer fire department to a part-time or full-time fire department of various configuration. I'll discuss the specifics of that in a moment, but that is something that will, you'll see some information there that sort of swings in a couple of directions between full-time or part-time or volunteer firefighters. On the following page, fire department is listed, fire administration, and again, you're seeing there with an asterisk 48, there's nine full-time fighter, projected to nine full-time firefighters in 2015. But again, at some point, we're seeing that there'll be a shift as you move to more full-time people, maybe less volunteers, and that's something you'll have to keep an eye on moving forward with respect to that number and the balancing of that number. Senior and community center is fairly self-explanatory, as well as public works and maintenance. One of the more interesting pieces, and what we try and do is temper the overall subjectivity of the study by looking at benchmarking. So, section 2.7, page 18, looks at benchmarking comparable facilities across other similar municipalities. So, the reason we do this is that oftentimes, when these studies are undertaken, there's the concern that if you ask for it, someone will give you the answer that you want to hear, and certainly inflate projections or inflate potential square foot requirements. So, what we do is we look at, one, the internal requirements that are being described by staff to us, and we temper those with the overall comparative analysis to other similar municipalities. And we start to look at those pieces, and I'm not going to go through this unless you'd like me to, line by line. But key to this is really looking at a number of different qualifiers and quantifiers across that analysis. So, as we look at, for instance, if I can direct your attention to the fire analysis, Owatonna, Ramsey, Prior Lake, et cetera, at the top, that first chart, basically, we look at population, and then we look at square miles, number of fire stations, the makeup of the firefighting staff, and the apparatus bays, drive-through, and then we start to do, if you will, an arithmetic that starts to look at apparatus per thousand population, apparatus bays per square miles, annual call volume, annual call volume per thousand population. What this does, it starts to measure this against a number of different pieces, because if we take pure population in a city that's, say, three times the size of Wilmer, then we run the risk of getting false information, which would say if you have a larger area to cover, you're going to have either more satellite stations, maybe more facilities, not necessarily more firefighters or more square footage, but you'd have more satellite facilities to better service and increase response time. Conversely, if the city is more compact and, or maybe shares some firefighting activity with neighboring state or local agencies, then you would see maybe less facilities. So, we're trying to measure that across a number of different measures. And again, you can see there as we start to look at that, where Wilmer stacks up with respect to the other municipalities. The other thing, too, I want to bring to your attention is that Prior Lake, for instance, has quite a high number of annual calls per thousand population. It's bringing that number up a bit strong. So, in terms of averages, that average probably blends down more towards Wilmer's number. That's the second from the right, third line down, you'll see 45 calls per thousand. And again, that's a high number, so it's skewing that number up a bit. It's not to say they're not being serviced, it's not to say that they're not, those aren't legitimate calls, it's just that that's a high number, so you want to be careful when we're measuring that. City hall, we do the same analysis. We look at population projections, square miles served, 2005 tax base, staff and council members, and again, looking at total numbers versus the average, you'll see some information there that's fairly interesting. Ramsey being probably the most pronounced, if you look at the staff there, 66 staff, that's because they are shared use with their police department. So, that number, again, skews them up a little bit. What that does, though, in terms of a shared use, is it cuts down their overall square footage to a certain extent because they're sharing certain facilities. So, again, as you look at city hall across the other averages, you'll see that with respect to the population, number of households, number of staff, et cetera, you're falling in terms of staff servicing under the average. So, your total number of staff in city hall are lower on average than other municipalities that we've compared this to. And I will say that these are trying to be as objective as possible in terms of the benchmarking and the comparative analysis, so we're not handpicking certain municipalities to make numbers look any certain way. We start with those numbers, trying to look at similar demographic conditions and geographical conditions, and then the numbers come after that. In section 3, we have the overall findings. That's page 20. And I'll summarize here as best possible. Basically, for the city office building, the current city office building footprint without council chambers could accommodate growth through about 2015. So, you have fairly sufficient space. Fundamentally, the issue with respect to the city administration is the way it's configured. It's not overly welcoming by today's standards. It's a bit inadequate in terms of how the public is greeted, how they're, how they arrive, how they do one-stop shopping, if you will. The model in municipal service centers is really coming to a service window, being able to get a building permit, pay a water bill, et cetera, in one-stop shop. You have that to a certain extent now, but you have to weave your way through the facility. In addition, there are some security issues with respect to free access into the facility. There aren't a lot of barriers to that access, and there's a number of other pieces here in terms of looking at how the efficiencies work, what the overall flexibility of the space is. That's another key piece. In terms of looking at how flexible is the space to basically accommodate more current styles of officing? So, how do you accommodate part-time workers, those that are maybe working in the field? How do you accommodate those that are task-based, if you will, rather than status-based? So, as we look at sizes of buildings and sizes of footprints, the tradition has been for a long time, but it's changing now over the last 10 to 15 years, is to, if you will, the higher the status, the larger the office. And really, the new trend in officing is really to do task-based responses, meaning that if you're a plan reviewer and you're looking at 30-by-40-inch drawings day in and day out, and you have plan racks and flat files, that you obviously need more space than someone, say, maybe working at a computer terminal and then going out in the field to do whatever they're doing for the day and coming back. Building inspector might be an example of that. So, with respect to that, it's a bit outdated with respect to the way the space works, but it certainly is sufficient, and it works at a fundamental level. Page 21, section 3.12. Oh, I should mention, by the way, that one thing, obviously, you don't have is the council chambers, and there's a lack of efficiency there with respect to workshops, council action that happens before or after in terms of having mailboxes, having access to staff, having some committee meetings, all sorts of things in approximation to the, or proximity, rather, to the city administration functions. So, those are noted there as well, and it's something we'll come back to in a moment. Fire department, fundamentally, the space for the fire department is, again, fairly adequate through the year about 2015. Most of the findings that we have are qualitative for the most part. So, it's really about what is that environment like? And the one key piece that stands out is there are no accommodations currently for women's locker rooms or women's shower facilities. And again, from a functional standpoint, it still functions, it still works, but it's really not up to speed with respect to how it's servicing female firefighters. The other thing that came up, and it was really one of the underlying premises of this piece of the study, was looking at how the fire department services the northwest part of town. Today, you don't have, I would say, a substandard response time with respect to getting to the northwest part of town, but there are limitations with respect to access over bridges and to the northwest part of town up by the college and so forth. The fundamental piece there is whether you want to increase those service times and increase the ability to service that growing part of the city. You are doing that now, but there was some discussion as well about possible joint use or shared use with the county with respect to emergency services. And so, what we're seeing is that, it's the bottom piece there in that rose-colored, that a satellite station of approximately 6,000 square feet could provide space for the addition of full-time duty crews and firefighters and the needed apparatus bays. Again, this is in response to more of an optional piece that better serves the community rather than a pressing need, and I want to stress that. So, the 6,000 square feet is derived from an 80-foot bay by about 80 feet long or so, accommodating a number of different bays. This also could accommodate some ambulance services that, again, get the ambulances out to a closer location to a growing population base. Section 3.13, page 22, is the public works and maintenance building. This piece and the senior center, I would say that are probably the toughest pieces from an objective standpoint to put a finger on, because what happens, we start to look at these, is we aren't in the business of coming in and telling cities how to function, how to run their cities in a cost-effective, proficient manner. But, so, we are taking a lot of information at face value in terms of the number of trucks that you have. We're not going through a critical analysis of the number of plows you have to service your square footage, or your, square footage, rather, your square mile coverage, number of streets, number of miles of roads that need to be plowed, et cetera. We're taking that at face value. So, with respect to that, we are seeing there is a bit of a deficit going forward with respect to some truck parking and salt storage, and also with respect to some of the way the offices function. I think those are the two critical pieces or two critical findings there, that administrative area is a bit inefficient in terms of being able to function in a, again, a more up-to-date office environment and having some of the needed workspace, meeting space for various activities onsite. But I would say that overall, that there's just a moderate need with respect to overall public works and maintenance facility building. And then, section 3.14, page 23, looks at the senior center. And this, of all pieces, I would say is the most difficult at all to put a finger on, because what this is, is, in a lot of ways, we describe this as optional municipal facilities. If we look at core municipal services, which are city administration, fire, and police, and start to add in potentially a library and other activities beyond that, parks and rec, for instance, this becomes one of those pieces. It's really about how you service the senior community and the rest of the municipality. And so, it's something that is really more about the subjective nature of how you want to run the city, how you want to provide those services, et cetera. So, with respect to square footage on that, there seems to be plenty of space within the existing facility. The key piece here is how is it actually functioning, and can you develop any revenue streams by renting or enhancing those revenue streams by enhancing that space? So, what we looked at and what we're seeing is that you may be able to, by adding and updating some of those facilities, you may be able to see more increased rental revenue by being able to better service receptions, celebrations, gatherings, et cetera, at that Section 3.2 looks at options then going forward with respect to those findings. So, again, page 24, section 3.2. What we've done is really we've broken those down into, if you will, action items for the various facilities. So, with respect to the city office building, we're looking at really four options. One, and let me back up for one moment. All these pieces are also based on empirical observation, looking at the spaces, looking at the conditions of the flooring, the wall coverings, the doors, the hardware, et cetera. But that said, it's not looked at a highly scientific, you know, we're not up in the plenum looking at the condition of the insulation, and we're not on the rooftops looking at mechanical systems, we're not looking at warranties or conditions of roofs, et cetera, and I want to stress that, that we're not doing hard and fast looking at the physical building conditions. That said, you all know from being in there that the interiors are fairly dated, they certainly don't comply with a number of Americans with Disabilities Act requirements for access, for signage, for, certainly within the toilet areas, the fountains, et cetera. And so, option one looks at renovating the building interior. Option two looks at renovating the building interior and adding a potential council chambers. There's a side note to that, that the Rack 8 studio could be included in that. It's not included in the square foot cost nor in the square foot projections that I'll get to in a moment, but that is something that you could add and make a more robust recording studio, public access TV component. Option three would be to build a new city hall incorporating council chambers and more parking. And option four would be to build a new city hall and incorporate a new senior center downtown. This refers back to some of the issues in your comp plan, some of the renewed interest in rejuvenating and reinvesting in the downtown. Clearly, with respect to seniors and access, remote locations like it's in now are less conducive to access with respect to walking buses, et cetera. It really leaves people at their own devices to get to that facility rather than reinvesting the downtown with potential senior housing, maybe assisted living in proximity to the hospital, again, developing some synergies of use with respect to renewed investment downtown. So, that's where the piece, the caveat in downtown, one could suspend that and say, build a new city hall with senior citizen community center and leave it at that. So, it's really a policy decision on your behalf in terms of whether you want to keep that downtown or possibly move that off-site someplace. Following page 25, section 3.22, looks at the fire department. Really, two simple options there. One, supplement what you currently have by building a new satellite station, or two, if you don't do that, limited upgrades to the existing facility. Again, the building is a bit dated and could benefit from a number of different upgrades to the interior. Page 26, section 3.23, public works and maintenance building. Two options there. One, expand for salt storage and vehicle storage, and two, renovate or expand to accommodate additional offices and waiting area. These could be combined as well into one single option. Again, one is more about the vehicle storage and salt storage, the other one is about functioning within the office environment of that facility. And the following page, 27, senior center, 3.24, two options there, remodel the interiors, again, to develop a reception area, some offices, update the finishes and the lighting, or secondly, a more robust option would be to divest of that facility and co-locate with the new city hall slash council chambers. And if we look at page 28, section 3.3, looked at some square footage components to that, and this adds just some specificity to the information prior. Again, as I noted, the, if you look here, what this chart describes is the current population, 18.7 at the top center column, and then to the right, 2025 square foot, I'm sorry, population projections at 20,500. So, what we're seeing then is, within that, the overall staffing changes, again, city office building 28 going to 36, and then the needs. And what I want to stress here is that the square footage really doesn't have to increase. We think that just you can add and accommodate staff by simply renovating and reconfiguring what you currently have. That said, if you added council chambers and some of those support facilities to that, you would add approximately 1,450 square feet in addition to the space that you have today. Fire department, again, we see a need of about 6,000 square feet. Again, this, I can't stress enough that this is really a service-driven component rather than a needs-based component that's tied primarily to current population and current service times. So, it's something you'll want to look at specifically with the fire department with respect to those initiatives in concert with the county and some of those activities that would move a facility, a satellite facility, out to the northwest part of the city. Public works and maintenance building, adding approximately 5,400 square feet, senior center, no additional square footage, and the ambulance, this would come again in conjunction with the other fire space. So, a total need of about 13,800 square feet. The issue with that, of course, is that it's too difficult to do one piece without affecting some of the other spaces. So, you don't typically renovate a portion of the office or simply just add the square footage you need. So, as we look at the primary options identified more specifically in page 30, section 4.1, what this does is restates the pieces that we talked about before, but it's in matrix form, so it looks at those options. And then we talk about overall site considerations and building placement. These are general pieces, and let me digress for a moment. One of the things that we did not look at is site selection nor site impact. So, we did not, for instance, look at alternative locations for the city hall. We did not look at where, if you did a satellite facility for the fire department, that would be located, nor those accounted for with respect to projected costs. So, that's something to bear in mind here.
Do we have any questions?
Sure. Any questions that I can answer with respect to where we're at up to 4.2? Yes?
Thank you. You talked about site selection and then site impact. What does it mean, site impact? What are you talking about here?
Two things. Site selection would be where potentially you would relocate or expand to. So, if we take the fire department, for example, So if we take the Fire Department, for example, if you were doing a satellite facility, we have not gone out and identified potential parcels for purchase, we have not identified square foot or acreage requirements for that facility, nor have we talked about what the overall cost of that would be. Site impact is really about what, what literally the impact of that facility has on that space or that location. So if you were to, say, relocate a City Hall, council chambers to a different location, there's an impact on the current site with respect to its contribution to the downtown, to the costs associated with that, and there's an impact to where it's going with respect to what it means to that new location, and then the environmental impact as well, so stormwater runoff, stormwater management, value contributed to adjacent facilities or areas, or properties rather, within that, that general area. So they're similar, but they're, but they're different in terms of what they mean.
Thank you.
Tom, looking at other communities, you know, we have relatively, by estimation, a large number of city-owned or used buildings scattered throughout the community. Is that fairly typical of most communities, or?
Yes.
Those facilities would be more consolidated?
Well, how do I answer that more concisely? It varies across the board. I guess that's the simplest way. I would say that a number of different municipalities that we've done work with tend, or certainly have knowledge of and have done work in their city, oftentimes you'll see police linked up with the City Hall, that that's a very common piece, and oftentimes you'll see municipal complexes which are police, fire and City Hall. My partner Gary Hay is actually meeting in Northfield tonight, they're talking about a consolidation of their facilities, potentially. They today have a standalone City Hall, not unlike yours, they inherited an elementary school. They have a police department that shares space with its Fire Department, and they have, they're very cramped, and they need to move, so they may basically be separated or they may co-locate elsewhere. They have a library component that may want to combine with the City Hall, there again is another piece that oftentimes is combined. And then it runs the gamut between Public Works, water treatment, water department, sometimes those are in the City Hall, sometimes those are in Public Works. So there's any number of different pieces. I would say, I'm seeing nothing unusual with respect to the number of facilities you have, except maybe for the fact that the Senior Center seems a little bit odd in terms of its location, again, with respect to how it's servicing the general population. So other than that, that's more of a geographic piece rather than a ownership piece.
And then with respect to the Fire, our Fire Hall situation, if we were to locate some type of satellite facility out to the northern part of, part of town, and that, is there any estimates on how much that could reduce our response time, or, I believe Marv can answer that, or if you've ever looked at that, how much that would reduce our response time?
We have not done that analysis. That's something that, it can be done in terms of a response time analysis. We have not done that, I don't know if that's been done.
That wasn't part of your scope of things to?
Nope.
I don't know, if we reduce the response time, that, response time, that has a major impact on our ISO insurance ratings?
I'm sorry?
And if I'm not correct, if we reduce our response times for our Fire Department, that has a major impact on our ISO insurance ratings, which?
Absolutely.
Affects the insurance rates for the whole community.
The one thing that, to note today is that, at least what we're seeing, you're not deficient in any way, so you're not at a substandard level. So that's the good news, is that we're not seeing that you're below a certain threshold that would really mandate you to do that. So that's the good news. It's really about how you cooperate jointly with the county, and is there a value-added reason to do that, in terms of some sort of shared partnership, and again, servicing the broader community.
And then, I guess on page 30, you made some references to access to most of our buildings by the general public, and as far as the way they're accessed, and security is now an issue?
Yes, yes.
Those items can all be addressed in building renovations for that security for?
Right.
Public coming in?
Right, well, it's a twofold piece. One, on the one hand, there's security issues with respect to how you access facilities today. Yes, that can be fixed by minor or sometimes more significant renovation, remodeling. The other piece is how the public really interfaces with your public facilities. So in terms of how do people perceive the civic nature of City Hall, the civic pride that's exhibited there, how do you recruit and retain employees, how do people come, what's the ease of service? So the access, on the other hand, wants to be easy and more obvious with respect to how you get into facilities, how you move about, where you pay your bills, where you talk to persons A, B, or C. So it's a twofold piece that sometimes are at odds with one another, but again, both of those can be cleaned up through remodeling and renovation.
Any other questions? Councilmember Backen?
Yes, thank you.
Yes, thanks, Tom. Please report. Did you take into consideration at all the, as far as services down the road and in the future, that a lot of, a lot of these permits, fees, licenses will probably be done over the internet?
Absolutely. The impact of technology is enormous, and how, without getting into a long tangent about technology and its impact on the way that we work and communicate, et cetera, there's still a profound need, and I think the more we work, we do a lot of work with public agencies, county, city, state, as well as higher education, and what we're finding is more and more, as there is more robust technology, there's a more compelling reason to have face time. So we see that, yes, the bill paying, some of the more pragmatic pieces about filing, et cetera, but in terms of having a dialogue over a set of plans for a building permit, for instance, or talking with someone about development opportunities on various parcels, it's very difficult to do and a bit convoluted over online, even if it's in sort of real-time video conferencing. So yes, that's a key piece, and I would say that one of the things that was fairly obvious to us is just the lack of some of the robust technology in terms of how you're, how you're interfacing, where you're interfacing, how the spaces are embedded with technology, how the spaces are more flexible or lack thereof. So in a lot of communities we work with, they'll have various spaces that have, they're flexible because they're, they have robust technology, so they can be used for a number of different functions, therefore the square footage overall can be reduced. And so, the short answer is, yes, that's a consideration. We didn't look at a strategy for that, nor did we look at what the square foot savings could be, but it is a consideration with respect to the spaces going forward and some of the projections, looking at what the impact of that might be across those pieces.
How about, is there room for at-home employees down the road for the city?
Absolutely. That's what, what I was touching on before was the way in which the offices function today are, no offense, they're nineteen seventy-five offices. So the way in which they function, closed doors, again, based on hierarchy and title, the workstations themselves, the acoustic separation and/or transfer, those sorts of pieces and the technology are really about an outdated mode of officing. So what we're seeing more and more of is allowing people to do things like what we call touchdown spaces or bullpens. So you, for instance, could come in, sit down at a laptop or a secure terminal, log in, check email, do business, log out of the server, and move on to whatever you're doing. Again, you can do that building inspectors, you can do that with part-time staff, shared desks, we also do what we call hot desking. We have, say, people work Monday, Wednesday, Friday, and another person works Tuesday and Friday. Though, you're really limited to that now because the technology and the, and the physical space isn't really conducive to that. So we see, that's why the projections in terms of square footage aren't really going up, even though you're adding some staff, is that we see by renovating, you can basically recapture some of that space and use it as, at a more efficient manner, or in a more efficient manner, and start to do that, getting people in the piece, in the place where they're most productive, and in the place that it's most conducive to efficiencies within the city. There's also a whole piece that's uncaptured there about an aging workforce, and where they're working, how they're being serviced or and/or brought back into the workforce. And that has to do a lot with accessibility and some of the visual acuity issues with respect to the space, and we didn't get into those in great length.
The present City Hall, without the council chambers and, is it, would you say it would be, would it be advisable to renovate that or to start over? I mean, because of the spaces so inefficiently used?
It really bears out, what you really need to do is a cost-benefit analysis to look at that. And the reason I hedge on that is, one, if, actually, if you look at page thirty-one, which is the next page here, and I'll get to this in a moment, what we start to do is break down the estimated costs for these efforts. What we did not do is look at some of the life cycle costs and replacement costs that are in the pipeline. So the next piece that I advise you to consider is looking at what the current life cycle is on the various facilities, what you, what you have for current deferred maintenance and backlog, what those costs are, and then what your potential pending costs are. Because when you start to, you're asking the right question, it's really about where you're at today, let's just say, for instance, you have a million dollars of backlog, and that's just a number that I'm using. And you see that you have to renovate for another million dollars to get you to a certain level of building conditions, and you have to do certain replacements of another million dollars, now you're looking at three million dollars. So what does that mean with respect to a new facility that does provide better services, has a fifty-year life to it, so on and so forth? That's something that, in this level of study, I'm not prepared to give a specific answer on that, but it is something that, that's the right question to be asking, is what's the most cost-effective, I shouldn't say cost-effective, what provides the most value to the city in the long run in terms of your investment? So in terms of your capital improvements, should that be repair and replacement and the Band-Aid approach, which works and functions just fine? Or with respect to those costs going forward over the long term, are you better with respect to building new facilities that are more energy efficient? I can tell you that we've done some work with both Excel and Touchstone Energy on looking at life cycle costs and recapture costs, both from a traditional energy use standpoint and a more sustainable or energy efficient, or LEED-certified building, for instance, where you're looking at using geothermal heat pumps, et cetera, and the investment on those pieces is a pretty, the window's diminishing every year, so with respect to geothermal heat pumps, we're looking at ten- to fifteen-year return on investment, and then it's a real big cash flow change in terms of those expenditures in the long term. So those are factors that really bear another level of investigation from an engineering and architecture standpoint, and you need to look at that in the big picture as relates to not only capital costs, which are indicated here, but also life cycle and energy use costs. And then the third piece, which is the subjective variable, is what does it mean with respect to how you function, the, again, efficiencies in operations, the recruiting and retention, the attraction of employees, et cetera. Those are key considerations that, you know, I can't certainly put a number to those, but, but they are key considerations to bear in mind.
Then, one final item, the item number four here under, on page thirty-one, the City Office Building, I'm assuming that that, that included the council chambers also?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. Thank you again.
Other questions?
Any other questions on the report? That's where we're back. On page eight, bullet six, you say, and you talked about it a bit with Councilmember Christianson, "Changes in technology offer opportunities to consolidate and increase efficiencies but will demand a more progressive plan." What is a more progressive plan?
Plan there refers to building plan, floor plan, a little bit an action plan. So it's, when I say progressive, it's something that's looking forward in terms of some of those alternative officing pieces that I was just speaking to. It requires one to reconfigure the space in a, in a more current, a space that's more reflective of current officing environments that will allow you to do some of those key pieces, rather than trying to shoehorn in technology in the existing physical conditions. So that's, that's what that refers to. Other questions?
Any other questions?
I have one. Tom, the, the scope of this study was limited.
Yes.
What, if, if the city were to choose to pursue any of these ideas or recommendations or suggestions, what would we find out in the next step? Would we get a lot of the answers to the questions that have been asked, or what else would we get, expect to get?
Well, there's, there's two, there's two components to next steps. One, it's really looking at overall due diligence in terms of building investigation. That can be done autonomously, it doesn't have to be done in conjunction with the other piece that I'll describe in a second, but it gives you a better sense of what's our real costs with respect to any of these given facilities. So does a building need tuck pointing, does it need to have new roofs? And again, we could do an energy audit as well, that's a piece that looks at what's my expenditures on overall operating costs to heat and cool the building. So that's one component, and that can be done on a facility-by-facility, facility-by-facility basis. The other piece is, we would look at a real programming document that would sit down and, and start to basically look at in a much more specific manner how the spaces themselves function, what the adjacencies are, what the specific spaces within the facility are going forward. This is basically saying, here's what you've got today, you're adding some warm bodies, you're going to need some more space. That's the recommendation. The next piece says that the administrator works with the city planner three days a week and oftentimes has impromptu meetings, and can't have them in the office because the office is being used by someone else or needs another space, et cetera. It looks at a highly specific way that identifies, it's basically, it's basically what we call workplace mapping. So we start to look at how you actually function within the space. What do you do on a day-to-day basis? And I don't mean you specifically, but what do staff do day-to-day? What time does the receptionist come in? When does the building get unlocked? What sort of adjacencies are key? Where are there areas that you can downsize in terms of square foot requirements that you have excess space today because of the space you inherited? Where are there spaces that you need more space? Where are those spaces that you don't have today, for instance, that you would like to have and/or will add operating efficiencies? So if you had, if you, here's an example, if you have three offices today and they all have a small meeting table for four people in them, I would argue that you could probably get by with the same offices with two meeting rooms that are adjacent to them and available on an impromptu basis, or even in what we call a bullpen, so it'd be a situation similar to this where there's office tables in the middle that are shared. And again, there's privacy and acoustics issues we would deal with. But then we would start to derive an overall square foot program based on that specific programmatic response to those needs. And that will tighten up that overall square footage and give you a much clearer idea about what that real space is going to be from an operational standpoint. And then we would start to look at, do we pursue a new building or do we pursue renovation? And that can get tagged into there, and the new building piece would be looking at what we call program testing. So the program testing would actually be doing planned layouts, if you will. So it's a floor plan layout that looks at, okay, here's the program, now we're going to test that against the realities of, of real-world conditions. So it's one thing to say we have sixteen thousand square feet of space, it's another thing to say, here's the arrival sequence, here's the private area, here's the public area, here's the current building code requirements for toilets, here's the current building code requirements for accessibility, here's the expansion requirements, here's a standard structural bay, here's a standard volume with respect to floor to ceiling heights. That will get you a much tighter definition on what that building could look like going forward. Doesn't design the building, but it puts a much tighter framework together with respect to how the building is described. Another piece to that could be then looking at site testing. So if you took City Hall as an example, or you take Fire Department as an example, so if you take, let's just take Fire Department. If you said you're going to add a sixty-four hundred square foot or six thousand square foot satellite facility, what are the viable sites? What, what does that site look like? How big is it? What does it mean with respect to working cooperatively? Working cooperatively with the, with the Fire Department to make sure that meets their needs. There'd be a dialogue with the county about their needs, start, again, starting to pin that down. But you may find that on paper, it works, but the only parcel that's available is a triangular parcel, and the access really doesn't work. So that's off the table. And so maybe there isn't a parcel that's available, or maybe the zoning isn't right, or there's other barriers to development, or the location isn't far enough away, things like that. So those, those are potential pieces that you'd look at much more specifically in terms of a pre-design activity that would predate any sort of design activity on those various facilities. Does that help? Any other questions on that with respect to other tasks or activity to round that piece out? And of course, with that, then you'd put much more specific costs to that. And I do, I do want to point out here, and that's maybe a segue into page thirty-one, which is, the costs on page thirty-one are estimated construction costs in a square foot cost only. And so going forward, we would start to put other costs into the project, so total project costs. So this is, and I'll get to this in a moment in terms of some of the specifics, but this, this is really trying to compare apples to apples in terms of order of magnitude costs. What it's not trying to do is predict every subtlety of what one might encounter when doing this project. What Mr. Schmidt was talking about in terms- What Mr. Schmidt was talking about in terms of next steps, one would do that, you'd look at the specifics of what that projected use would be, where it would be, and then we'd start to wrap project costs around that. So, project costs are, one, you've got the square footage costs of the building, the construction costs, then you've got the soft costs, which are engineering, architecture, legal fees, soil borings, all those pieces that support that. Then you've got the, what we call mobilization costs and/or occupation costs, so fixtures, furnishings, equipment, telecommunications, data, relocation costs, furniture, et cetera. Then you've also got inflation in that. So, if you take midpoint of construction at a certain date, the current rates of inflation, what does that mean to wait to 2015 versus 2010 to put a building online? That's a cost that at some point you're going to incur. And there's a few other pieces that factor into that as well, but that's, that will give you a much better picture of overall project cost rather than construction cost. Oh, and the other piece in that would be site. What does site assembly, site purchase, et cetera, mean if you're having to purchase a facility? And you also look at disposition. So, if you were to take the current city hall and to relocate that, could you sell that site? Would that make any sense, so on and so forth? And you can start to run a pro forma that looks at what's the real cost, and then start to look at some of those operating expenses and savings, and start to say, so where can we get our return on investment? What are our overall costs long-term? So, it gets very complex, but it's not too difficult in terms of measuring those pieces out and giving you a little roadmap in terms of next steps. So, I'll move into page thirty-one, which is the potential scenarios and the related costs. The numbers themselves, again, this is broken down in a similar fashion to those pieces before, or on prior pages. So, if we look at the city office building and council chambers, we could renovate the existing building interior, this is thirty-five dollars a square foot. This number is really a cosmetic renovation. What this looks at, thirty-five dollars a square foot basically gets you what we call tenant improvement. So, it's new carpet, new wall coverings, some new finishes, you're moving a few walls around, doing some minor modifications, but this does not upgrade the overall electrical system, it does not upgrade the overall mechanical system. Those are two key pieces that carry a lot of cost in terms of wholesale renovation. Then, renovating the interior and expanding to add a council chamber, so if you, again, did a cosmetic renovation to the existing facility plus a council chambers, you're seeing that at about 1.2 million. Build new city hall with council chambers, again, this is fairly straightforward, and build new city hall with senior center, again, it's the square footage of those at a hundred seventy-dollar square foot cost factor, which is about a six million dollar construction cost. And this does not look at any sort of contingency pieces in terms of any hazardous material abatement or anything like that. It's just meant to try and give you a range of costs and compare apples to apples across those various facilities. Fire department, again, six thousand square foot facility, about a hundred thirty-five dollars a square foot, at a little less than a million dollars, and then limited upgrades to the existing space, about a hundred forty thousand dollars. Public Works and Maintenance, this looks at salt storage, a thousand-ton salt storage piece, and I have not confirmed this, by the way, the thousand-ton salt storage, we just talked about salt storage, so it's, that's a fairly decent-sized piece, if there's anyone here that can add some color to that. And vehicle storage, that's about four hundred eleven thousand dollars. And then renovate or expand the office space, again, this is more of a cosmetic minor, minor piece within the overall existing space, and then adding about twelve hundred square feet to the facility as well. And then the senior center in the two scenarios, we talked about renovation, you'll see, you'll see here, this is sixty-five dollars a square foot. The difference there is that here we are talking about adding some modified mechanical systems, electrical systems, so we're creating some new spaces within that building rather than just simply changing some of the finishes and fixtures. And then co-locating with the new city hall, council chambers. I will stress that these are modest numbers. We have a building under construction, a fire station for the City V-Dina right now. Those numbers are tracking in that 130 range. It's about a five million dollar project. So, in terms of order of magnitude, as the building gets larger, your cost per square foot tends to diminish a little bit just because you have some economy and scale. But these are accurate numbers, but I would say they're not luxurious numbers. So, these aren't, what we're trying to do is find a median number. I can tell you that you can build buildings for less than this, and you can build buildings for more than this. So, take these all with a grain of salt with respect to how those numbers are derived. But they are derived on accurate historic cost measures. Any questions on those in terms of the specifics? Okay. And the appendices themselves are fairly self-explanatory. These break down some of the spaces, the program spaces, I won't get into these specifically. We talk about some of the existing square footages, so these are for your reference on page thirty-four. These break down the existing uses within the various facilities, looking at, in an aggregate sense, how the spaces are broken down and used today on a square foot basis. And there's background in terms of some of the things, some of the questions on page thirty-five. Section 5.2, it talks about workplace considerations. These are some of the things that we talked about already, it's fairly self-explanatory. And there's a few definitions at the back. And the other piece, too, is section 5.4, if you're wondering what that is, page thirty-eight, there's space standard drawings. These are, as we look for, as we look at some of the, just the standardization of space, these are typical space standards that we're looking at just as a point of reference. So, they're included just for your use in terms of seeing how we're tracking various square foot requirements and square foot sizes by different uses, primarily office space. So, those are just a reference tool within that. And then there are a series of appendices that you probably don't have. It's basically this. If you, I'll certainly convey this to Mr. Schmidt, and you can have copies of it, but this is all the questionnaires that were filled out by staff, some of our baseline research, some of the other analysis, et cetera, that are, you know, feel free to look at that, and I'll get you a copy of that for your records. But it's basically all that background data that supports this information. Any other questions that I can answer in terms of the work that's done, findings?
Any other questions?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On the senior citizen center, we currently have twelve thousand four hundred square feet, and I see you plan a new one for the same square footage. Do we need to expand that or not?
I would say that you probably don't, you may even have excess space. Again, it really bears the other, the question, which is, how are you really using that space today? What, is there excess space? Is it size to capacity? We did not get into a, for a week-by-week, month-by-month use, both by seniors, if you will, and rental use. So, the question would be, are you turning away business today because the building is undersized? Could you capture that for receptions and such by sizing up? I would say that it seems to be quite adequate for current functions on a day-to-day basis. It's really more about that revenue stream potential going forward.
Because I know the school district is talking about building a new grade school, and they talked about putting a senior center in there.
Mm-hmm.
That would eliminate that for us, then, the city.
Sure.
And then the salt storage, I know that the county and state went together and built one jointly. I'm sure we could probably do something with them, too, at the same site.
To a certain extent. Some of those are derived, they're derived specifically from that point of origin, so as you're salting, and again, we didn't get into a lot of dialogue about some of the specifics of operations, but my understanding is that you're originating from that site with respect to salting streets. So, it needs to be here, or if you will, in town, rather than at a remote facility or something where you're trucking out there, loading up and coming back. But that's certainly something that could be looked at and should be looked at with respect to if there's any efficiencies there as our shared-use opportunities that could save you some cost.
Thank you.
One thing, I just want to add one comment to that. The other thing, too, that we didn't look at, and there's a lot more of it happening, are those other public-private partnerships. So, not just county or state agencies or other municipalities, but how do we combine a senior center with a for-profit activity such as restaurant, coffee shop, catering facility, things like that, libraries, co-locating with similar-type pieces? Those are other pieces, too, that you can start to look at, either reducing overall costs, sharing operating costs, capturing some revenue in terms of leasebacks. So, those are other opportunities, too, and they're largely site-dependent. So, if you locate, you know, down by Highway twenty-three bypass, then it's a different scenario than if you locate two blocks from here, in terms of some of who those partners might be.
Okay.
Anything else?
Thank you, Tom.
You're welcome.
Very interesting report.
Thanks.
I think we should motion to refer this to, probably, a joint council meeting or agenda, for the joint council working sessions, or one of the committees, but I would think the joint council working session may be a good place to further discuss this document. If somebody wants to make a motion or...
A move that we refer this to a council work session.
Second?
Second.
More discussion? But all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those same side, motion to carry. Missileary items, we have liquor license. Kevin, you were going to discuss that.
Councilmember DeBleek, members of the council, we've recently received an application from Rick Suarez to open Rick's Royal Steakhouse and Buffet on East Highway twelve in the former Henry's Restaurant. This application is for an on-sale 3.2 percent liquor license and an on-sale wine license. And again, the combination, according to state laws, with those two licenses, you're allowed to sell wine and all strong beer. The chief of police has reviewed the application and found everything in order, and the city attorney has signed off on the certificate of insurance for their various insurance coverages in place. Therefore, it is staff's recommendation that we approve the liquor application for Rick Suarez and the Rick's Royal Steakhouse.
Move to approve. Second? Any discussion? Kevin, is that a roll call?
It is because of charter on liquor licenses.
Okay. Ready to vote? Roll call, Kevin.
Councilmember Fagerly?
Aye.
DeBleek?
Aye.
Christensen?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Swenson?
Aye.
Gardner?
Aye.
Darkin?
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays.
I have a letter that was received at the city office building. This letter is a thank-you letter in regard to the recent Welcome Home Our Troops event that was held a week ago Sunday here. The letter reads, "Thank you to all your help. The city provided for the Wilmer Area Military Appreciation Parade. The community really reached out to these troops, and they felt it. At the picnic after the parade, soldiers commented on how they had been welcomed home before and how good it felt to see the community's support. We are humbled and grateful for all these people from the community who showed up to cheer our troops on, and it was a great day. All of this wouldn't have been possible without your help, and thank you very much," and it is signed by the Wilmer Area Welcome Home Committee.
Yes, we have announcement of council meetings. Finance?
Finance will meet Monday, the eighth, at four forty-five.
Public Works?
As far as I know, Tuesday, the ninth, at four forty-five.
And Labor?
No meeting.
Okay. And Community Development will meet October fourth at four forty-five.
This week?
This coming Thursday. And I think we've received a letter from Mr. Schmidt about a upcoming joint meeting, working meeting with the school and county administration and elected officials under a strategic planning workshop, which is scheduled for October thirtieth, 4:00 p.m. to 6:00 p.m. at the fire hall. I think everybody needs to keep that date open on their calendars and attend that meeting. And also have Wilmer Municipal Utilities has a appreciation and open house coming up that is scheduled for October ninth at 4:00 p.m. to 6:00 p.m. That'll be held at the Wilmer Civic Center Arena. That's open to all municipal utility customers. So, yes, do we have any COP meeting scheduled? Jim?
True, we do the usual things.
Okay. All right. Anybody have any other announcements or meetings?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just have a question. I see Mel isn't here, I suppose I'll address to Mick. That farm field north of the waste treatment plant, they must harvest the crops over the weekend, and with all the rain, Wilmer Avenue was pretty muddy from Sixth Street down to Ninth Street. Are we in a charge of the farmer for cleanup, or are we just going to send out the street?
Well, we generally, when a contractor, or in this case, a farmer tracks mud onto the street, we ask them to clean it up, or if we, or we'll do it and bill them for it. So, I'll have to check with Public Works and see if we've done anything like that on that one.
All right. Thank you.
There is no other items, motion to adjourn?
So, move.
Second? Okay. We are adjourned.